...Cambi imposed a 3% tax on the sale of marijuana items by a marijuana retailer. Whereas, the Clackamas County Elections Department offers the following as an official count of votes for the general election on November 8th, 2016. Yes, 6,345; no, 1,577; undervotes, 319; overvotes, 2. Now, therefore, I, Brian Hotson, Mayor of the City of Cambie, Oregon, do hereby proclaim the foregoing to be a true and accurate accounting as presented by the Clackamas County Election Division dated November 25th, 2016, dated the 7th day of December, 2016. So that makes everything official and accepted on our behalf regarding the elections. Thank you, Kim. Rick, Communications?
I have nothing right now.
All right. Great. It's our first opportunity for citizen input and community announcements. This is an opportunity for audience members to address the city council on items not on the agenda. Each person will be given three minutes to speak. You are first required to fill out a testimony or comment card. The lovely yellow card's there on the back. Prior to speaking, it handed to the city recorder, which is Ms. Schaefer there at the end. Staff and city council will make every effort to respond to questions raised during citizen input before tonight's meeting ends or as quickly as possible thereafter. For agenda items, please fill out a testimony comment card and give it to the city recorder, noting which item you wish to speak on. So, first up on tonight is John Savery.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. This is a good evening. Cold, but good. See, I've got the little green thing on. Something good to go. So, the reason I'm here tonight is I've given a lot of thought the last few weeks about the idea of liberty in the age of political correctness. This introspective moment was prompted by the recent kerfuffle surrounding the appointment of Counselor Smith. In particular, he was attacked for being an active citizen of a particular political party, for being a participant in the political process of our nation, which we all encourage our children to do and our fellow citizens to do. He was vilified for defending the First Amendment rights of a young couple that simply had the temerity to hold religious beliefs that weren't popular with a vocal minority of Cambie citizens. So my purpose here tonight is to remind folks that the First Amendment to the Constitution is meant to protect all citizens, not just those with whom we agree. Benjamin Franklin said that whoever would overthrow the liberty of the nation must begin by subduing the freeness of speech. When you look back in history, some of our greatest and most influential leaders were not politically correct. Who would ever claim that Martin Luther King, Gandhi, Malcolm X, and every single founding father were politically correct? These men refused to let the chains of political correctness silence their most valuable asset, their voices. If we, as citizens, don't defend the rights of all the people to live their lives freely without fear of retribution from the herd mentality of the politically correct, then one day we'll wake up and our First Amendment rights will have been abolished. Well, in my Constitution moment with one of my favorite quotes, "They came for the communists, and I did not speak up because I wasn't a communist. They came for the Jews, and I didn't speak up because I wasn't a Jew. Then they came for the trade unionists, and I didn't speak up because I wasn't a trade unionist. Then they came for the Catholics, and I didn't speak up because I was a Protestant. And then they came for me, and by that time, there was no one left to speak up." And that was the Reverend Martin Niemöller, a Protestant member, minister in Nazi Germany in 1945. So I wish all my fellow citizens a Merry Christmas, and may gladness you want in all.
Thanks, Sean. Jesus Navarro. Yes, sir.
I agree with many folks here in the community of Cambie that Cambie and this country is a great community. And it's gotta be a great community for everybody. I think the founding fathers of this country, this great country, had the vision of having a better life in this land. And so, I share that wish. I certainly have an amazing life with my family here, and I love it here. And I also want other folks, my people, for my people who don't feel the same. So I am here to plead for a statement of welcoming community that Cambie is, so that they can officially see that, that Cambie embraces everybody with open arms. So, I came to Cambie about 27 years ago, and I have nothing but great stories about Cambie. So great that I stay here, I marry somebody from here, and we have a great family, three beautiful girls who are amazingly smart, and they do well in school. I would like to ask the Cambie leaders to publicly announce that those principles are still alive in Cambie, and that we are welcome, anybody who's welcoming in Cambie. We are a great community. Some of the concerns, and I speak to this over some of the concerns about some Latino families, particularly Mexicans in this community, who are concerned over the results of the election for president in the United States a month ago. They are uncertain of a future, whether it's about splitting families, or themselves, or a whole family, due to the unknown. And so, that's one of the reasons why I would ask the Cambie leaders to advise those folks to rest easy. Cambie will not take part of that. And I also would like to offer, if I could, a couple of different names of Latinos, particularly Mexicans, who came to this country with the same vision of having a better life as kids. And they are now amazing people who have achieved amazing things. One of them would be Dr. Quiñones in Ojosa. If anybody knows who he is, then I think you'd be amazed of what he has accomplished. As well as Ingeniero Señor José Hernández. And somebody else like Simone Silva, who I like to call as my friend. Those people came here fighting poverty and lack of opportunity in their country, in their land. And so, they came here with the families, and now they've achieved things that I wouldn't imagine, that somebody who can, who's legal in this country and has the anger to work hard, achieve. And so, we have an astronomer, we have somebody who's the best brain surgeon, according to me, in the whole world. And then, somebody who's an artist who can portray the values of a family, not just the Latin family, but a family. So, I love what they've achieved. And of course, I want part of that, the American dream. And I want to share that with a lot of people. That's all I have for now, and I thank you for the opportunity again.
Kathleen Jesky, you are up next, and then Vicky Aguilar, you are on deck.
I'm here for the same reason that Jesus came. My heritage is Irish, and I was born in 1960. So, I understand a little bit about immigrant experience from studying my own family history. And I understand the turmoil that happens in our country at various times, and I feel like we're in that turmoil right now. There've been a lot of incidents close to home, not just far away, of racism. In Oregon City, at the high school, there's a girl that's been harassed, and people have written, and it's not a lot of people, because most of the students supported her, people have written N-word, "Go back to Africa" more than once on her notebooks. This is, my sister teaches in Oregon City. And in Salem, sadly, very recently, there was a city councillor that posted something incredibly inappropriate on his Facebook page about Black Lives Matter and how the protestors should be run over. Whether you agree with those protests or not, that's not what we do in the United States. And so, I really would like Cambie to get out in front of this problem, and we can agree or disagree whether these things are a result of the president-elect being the president-elect, or whether they're arising from something else. But they clearly are arising. Southern Poverty Law Center just did a study about racist incidents in the United States and the rise of this. And they found that sadly, and embarrassingly, to me, Oregon has the highest number of these incidents per capita, and they mostly happen around schools. And what usually causes me to come speak up is stuff like this, and all, in fact, I was in Washington DC last summer doing this, is my own grandchildren and my students. And I don't want my kids to be exposed to these kind of things, and I don't want my kids to be afraid, and I don't want my grandkids to be afraid. And I just think it would be really good for the city council to make a statement about this, just to say that we welcome everyone here. I have a sign in my yard that I got from Bridging Cultures that says that. No matter where you came from, you're my neighbor, and I'm glad you're here. And I really thought it was appropriate that at the beginning, we had an invocation, speaking about Christmas, because if you think back to the Christmas story, we all know that the Holy Family was traveling, and people would not welcome them in. And that is the story of Christmas. And then, we followed that with the Pledge of Allegiance, where we say, "Liberty and justice for all." That means "all" to me. And then, finally, we're marking today of the attack on Pearl Harbor. And we had a sad incident in the United States following that attack, which was that we interred a number of Japanese-Americans that had no connection to Japan whatsoever, other than heritage. I guess it would be unlikely that you would inter Irish-Americans for anything, because we would be really hard to find. But it's not hard to find people who look not like the typical American, I guess. So I just am really, I'm here to really ask the city council if you could make some public statement, just saying that we welcome everyone in Cambie. And I just think that would put a lot of fears to rest of members of our community that are feeling afraid, for whatever reason we want to say that is. I mean, we all recognize there's turmoil right now, and I'd like to calm that, and I'd like my kids to feel safe at school, and I'd like my grandkids to feel safe as well. And not, I would like not to hear children worrying about whether their friends, or their family members, or whatever, are gonna have something bad happen to them. So, that's why I'm here, and I hope that you can all make that statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicky. And then, Camarina, you're up next.
Hi, my name is Vicky Aguilar, and I am, just to give you a little bit of background about myself, I've been living in Cambie since 1998. I went through the Cambie schools. I graduated in 1997. I went on to get my teaching degree, and currently, I'm teaching at Trost Elementary. And I grew up as an ELLE learner, so English is my second language. And at that time, there was a lot of struggles. And I think what my family and I are thankful was that Cambie really showed us that they were welcoming, and they helped us through those struggles. So, it was a very conscious decision for my family and I to stay in Cambie, because we knew that this was a community where we felt comfortable, regardless of our, because we were a minority, and we're still are a minority. I decided to stay in Cambie and teach in the bilingual program, because I think that's the way to give back to my community. And I just would like to, and so does my family. My father works at St. Patrick's, my sister used to work at Cambie High, and now she's working at Trost Elementary. So, we are giving back to Cambie, and we feel that this is a community that welcomes everybody. But there is that fear, due to the political climate that we're up against. And, you know, regardless of who the president is, there was a lot of things said, a lot of things that not only hurt, but scared. And so, I just think that if Cambie was to have a statement that they are a welcoming community, it just would give assurance for everybody who is a minority, that this community is welcoming, that this community accepts other cultures, other languages. And just having the Trost bilingual program shows a lot about our community, that we are welcoming, and that we are, have this growth mindset, too. And so, I just wanna say that, you know, my students need that. The families that I work with need that. And so, I just hope that the council makes that decision about having an announcement, a public announcement, that Cambie remains open, welcoming, regardless of what's happening globally. So I hope that you take this into consideration, because we've been here a long time, and we know that you can make the right decision. And just make everybody feel okay, that, you know, we're gonna be okay, and we're gonna get through this. Thank you for your time, and I really hope that you consider this.
Camarina, and then Irene.
So my name is Camarina Galvin. I've been working for the Cambie School District for over six years now, and I've been serving on the Bridging Cultures Concilio, which is a committee within Bridging Cultures for over a year now. And I'm here for the same reason Vicky and Jesus and Ms. Jesky were speaking about. I really love the community of Cambie. I've been working here for several years, as I mentioned. And unfortunately, in the time leading up to the election and post-election, I have witnessed, and I personally experienced harassment. My husband and I were in a public space, and some people overheard us speaking Spanish, and we were cornered into, because of the setup of the room, we couldn't leave. And I had never felt so disempowered before, and fearful. And I never, I don't want anybody else to feel that way. And this incident did not happen in Cambie, I wanna make that very clear. But I don't want anybody to feel disempowered that way, or harassed, because of who you are, or your background, or your heritage, in any place, especially Cambie, a place I hold so dear. So, I also am here to say that I feel it's very important that the City of Cambie release a statement expressing their support and welcoming of all residents. And I think it would also be a great benefit to our community that this statement not be the sole objective. I think it's a first step. I think after that, there should be more conversations about how do we reach this? How do we ensure that within Cambie, we're fostering solidarity, friendship, and understanding between ethnic and cultural communities? Because this doesn't just happen overnight, there has to be intentional action so it occurs. So I hope we can keep having these conversations at a later time, so that we can work toward this objective, so that we can learn, listen, and share with one another for the benefit of Cambie. Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Hi. You.
Good. First of all, I'd like to thank all the residents of Cambie who received me at their door, who voted for me, who shared their feedback, who supported my campaign. It was the most amazing and tremendously great experience, and I wanna thank everyone for their contributions and their time. But what I'm here to talk to you today is about, it's on the same vein as the last few speakers. I am asking you, as city councillors, to make a statement of some sort. Many other cities and bodies have made really powerful statements, and I think that Cambie, being the beautiful city that continues to grow, I think we can't afford not to. I believe that a city that has inclusive language in everything that we write and everything that we do, where people feel included, supported, and safe, is going to be a city that grows and prospers. And I'm gonna give you just a couple statistics. Oregon's Latino population is growing at a faster rate than the national rate, and 12% of the state's population today is Latino, representing 72% of growth since the year 2000. And Latino business ownership has grown even faster than the growth of the population here in Oregon. And of the Slavic and Russian-speaking community, there is an estimated 150,000 people in Oregon. Of the 150,000 people living in Oregon, 21% live in Clackamas County. Every day, I hear stories of people being harmed emotionally, sometimes physically. Based on our political climate right now, I think that, I urge you, the city councillors, because you have the voice, and it's your leadership that is going to make people feel safe. I urge you to make some kind of statement that helps people feel included, safe, supported, and a valued member of this community. And I'd also urge our chief police to make some kind of statement that says bias-based crimes will be prosecuted. Thank you.
Irene, I'm sorry, what was that last comment that you made about the chief? Please, can you reread that?
I really like what the Multnomah County Sheriff's Office did. I can send you that link. They basically talked about Oregon laws, and how the police are not going to enforce any immigration problems or challenges. That's not what they're there for. So some kind of statement that makes the community feel safe, because right now, a lot of pain is happening.
Okay. And excuse me, just to be fair to what she had said earlier, too, if you don't mind me paraphrasing, Irene, if you don't mind me paraphrasing a little bit, you also asked that we would ensure that we are going to prosecute and follow through on bias-based crimes as well. Okay. That was the other thing, which we will, and we do. But if you guys wanna make a statement, I mean, you can direct me to do so.
It is an interesting time, for sure. I don't know what to expect next year, four years from now, I don't know what that's gonna look like. I will work with the city manager and our attorney and the dius, and we will look at what kind of a statement we can make. I'm just gonna, I'm not good off the cuff, so bear with me, please. You know, Jesus, I see, you know, Principal Navarro here, Kathleen speaking, Vicky. Those women have had a profound impact on my children at Trost. It pains me to hear that we have a student, or students, being harassed. I'm emotional because of the cold medicine. I got something in my eye, it might be my fingers. It's disheartening, and it's disappointing to hear that. And I hope that, because I believe that Cambie is a safe city, and it is a safe town, we parade on Facebook the greatness of our ranking in terms of safety, safest city in the state of Oregon, and things like that, but yet, we have these things occurring to our students in our schools, and that is unfortunate. And I believe that it does start here, and I believe it starts with you here as well. You are here because there's a concern, you are here because there is a piece that is just not lining up right. And I would hope that each of us here today, when those things are occurring, and we're walking past it, and we see it, and we're saying something to put a stop to it. I was a high school student, I get it, you know? I played football, I get it. I have no problem pushing someone into a locker back then for being stupid. That should be happening when someone's doing something stupid like this. That's really disheartening. We are a safe city. Yes, there are laws in our community that we need to enforce, and we need to uphold, and I will expect our police to do that. But I also expect them to do that, as they do now, with some grace, and with some latitude, and with some understanding. We have a great community in that we have an organization, Bridging Cultures, that has grown tremendously over the last couple of years. For those of you, the Thanksgiving dinner at Baker Prairie Middle School, it was filled beyond capacity, again. Families coming together and breaking bread and interacting. I got to practice my broken Spanish, which my children really find amusing, considering they're, I don't know, fluent now at 8, 10, and 12. So, thank you, Angie, for that, and Kathleen, and Vicky, I appreciate that. I know enough Spanish, I think, to stay out of jail. So I'll need them. Here's my statement. I'll meet with the rest of them to clean it up, because I'm not good off the cuff. So, my daughter came to me, and I asked her, we're in the car, she's now in 7th grade at Baker Prairie, I said, "What's going on there? What's happening?" You know, I'm curious as to, you know, Cambie's this great town, soon to be eclipsing into a city, in the valley of Willamette Valley, at the low point of the valley, and here we are. So, you know, we're insulated, right? So I asked my 12-year-old daughter, "So what's going on?" So here, to hear that the principal has to make an announcement over the loudspeaker the day before, I think, or the day of the election, that people needed, the students needed to tone down the chants, and tone down the back and forth, both sides, but that needed to be toned down. And I'm, and my kids probably get exposed more to what's going on because of the nature of what I do with my free time, which is this. And so, they hear my wife and I have dialogue, and we engage them in the dialogue of what's going on, and we engage them to, you know, not take the 30-second, 5-second soundbite on the 6 o'clock news, but let's have dialogue about it. Let's read about it, let's get into this, let's have, I wanna know what's happening. So to hear from my 7th-grade daughter, that she had a friend, or a couple of friends, come up and say, "Hey, well, I guess we'll be seeing you later." And I was like, "Well, what does that mean?" And to her, that meant that they were, "Well, you know, President Trump is now president, so my family's gonna have to leave." And so, so I'm trying to take this through the filter of a 12-year-old. And so, so I'm trying to take this through the filter of a 12-year-old, and what she's been exposed to, having gone through Trost and her friends. And it breaks my heart that there's this fear of that. So I said to my daughter, I said, "You know, if your friends are feeling that way, or they're feeling that concern, tell me, come find me. As long as I am the mayor, this will be a safe community for everyone, safe to speak your mind, speak to, free to..." To many cultures, our country is that way. Man, my eyes can't stop watering. Sorry.
You need another cold pill.
I need another cold pill. You know, Kathleen, you've talked about being an Irish immigrant, as, you know, my, my grandmother's parents came over that way, you know, as Irish immigrants. My grandfather's family is from Czechoslovakia, he says Bohemian, well, there is no Bohemian, so we'll say Czechoslovakia, but he's, he'll, he'll, is a diehard, ardent, true Bohemian. That's our country. And we, as a community, must speak up when those things are occurring. You know, I worked a number of years at a coffee chain, and I had a mentor of mine, one day, he was visiting the store I was managing in, and, you know, we were talking about standards and expectations, and he said, so we were talking, and somebody did something that wasn't a standard, broke a standard or whatever, and he's like, "Did you see that?" And I said, "Yes, I did." And he's like, "You know, I mentioned it?" And I said, "Yeah, I'll talk to him after the end of their shift." And he's like, "You know, when you walk past a standard or an expectation being violated and not say anything, it means you condone it." I would hope in our community to be safe and continue to be a safe place, when those things are occurring and we're hearing it and walking past it, that we're saying something, that we're not just turning a blind eye to it. That's, that's unfortunate. Spoke a little bit about it at the tree lighting, we had 2,500 people, almost 2,500 people turn up for our Light Up the Night. That's huge. It's a huge community event, and it was everybody. Camby has an opportunity in a great many things that are going on, in that, as I say this earlier, you know, we, we sit at the low point of the valley, but we have an opportunity to be the light on the top of the hill. And this is where it starts. It starts with this, we have young people here to talk to us tonight, and that engagement, it's huge. We have, we have a, I'll call it a magnet school in Trost. That's amazing. It's an opportunity that a lot of communities don't have. I'm proud of that, I really am. So I will work with Joe and Rick and the diocese, we will craft a statement, you know, that's obviously a little bit more eloquent than this, but know that, please, that we are working on it. We have done stuff with our police officers reaching out to the Hispanic and Mexican communities, and we are going to be talking about that at the first of the year. When the new council comes, we will be talking about that and the impact of that. And we made a statement back in July with, with the parade piece and whatnot, that we are an inclusive community, we do want people of all cultures to be here and feel welcome here. We are doing those steps to do that. It takes time to filter those things out, yes, and have those dialogues, absolutely. But it starts with dialogues here, amongst yourselves, and it starts with, like I said, when stuff is going on, pulling people aside and saying, "Okay, that's enough. That is enough." So, that's my, my off-the-cuff from this evening. Anybody else want anything to say, or?
I think we should applaud you.
Yes?
Mayor Hudson, would we hope to see at the next city council meeting a proclamation of some sort?
I will work with, I'll work with staff, I mean, we're moving in here, we will do our best to get it for something for the first meeting in January, if not definitely the second meeting of Jan, it will happen in January. I just, I have, I want to make sure that we do a proper job.
This is our last meeting.
You know, this is our last meeting of the, of the calendar year, so we won't meet again until January, so that's why I tried to clarify that. Thank you, sir. The, so it will occur in January, it's just a matter of which meeting, I don't know yet. So, yes, yes, absolutely. And hopefully, I know, I think Daniel's still not going around, and so hopefully, you know, some of these words that you guys have shared and that I have shared will make it out into the community through various points, and maybe even Camby now might pick it up and spread, you know, so, you know, but I'm not trying to make light of it, it's, it's a, it's a piece, and it's, it does need to be spread out there, so I don't want applause. The work begins here, with this group, and your friends, and you talking about it, and it's the teachers at Trost and Baker Prairie and Lee having those conversations and teaching our students and our young people that, you know, skin color is just God's way of having variety, you know, and that we've got different cultures, and that's what makes America great, is that we've got so many different cultures blending together to make a great country. So I thank you guys for bringing this up and coming in and speaking, so that takes a lot of courage, where a lot of people don't always do that. So, thank you. Excuse me.
May I say something, Mayor Hudson?
Sure, allows me to drink some water.
Okay, first of all, that was, that was a beautiful speech. We all appreciate it very much. I'll just say thank you very much to everybody that came and had the courage to tell their stories, and I look forward to making this public statement with the mayor and everybody else that wants to be part of that. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you all, I appreciate it. Any other comments, or moving into the next agenda item, which is mayor business? Yes, ma'am?
I did not plan on speaking tonight, but I just, now it's time to say, I'm really proud of the sign I have in my front yard that says, "Everyone here is welcome." I'm just having a, 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 I'm
So I'm Anthony and I'm working on my citizenship in the community badge.
Excellent. And what does that entail?
Um, it intends going to a council meeting and taking down note, taking notes.
You've come to a very good meeting tonight, for sure. Most of the time, there's like two people here, so you've got a full house. Well, excellent. And now how many merit badges do you have?
Uh, I don't have any at the moment.
So this will be your first one?
Yes.
Perfect. Well, thank you for being here, sir. Good luck and keep working hard on it, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And finally, before I turn it over to the rest of the crew up here, let's see, snowmageddon, snow apocalypse, whatever you want to call it. If it happens and we have a lot of snow, roll with it. We have no snowplow. Yeah, you guys want snow, don't you? Just so you know, even like a little bit of snow in Portland, I think Canby closes. So, yeah, so yeah, let's, you know, anyways, as I'm saying, just be safe. Don't get crazy. Looking on your neighbors, make sure that they're okay. If in fact it does get that bad here, but... So no, I don't need any phone calls or Facebook posts about how we should have a snowplow. Not for three days of snow in Canby every other year. So on that, I will turn it on down here to Mr. Smith and any comments, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I wanted to make a correction. The newspaper said my open office hours was every day in the morning. It's Wednesdays, 8:30 to 9:30. So I am there every day, but I have other things I have to do also. No one's taken me up on it yet, so I do hope someone will. And I did meet-
To clarify, that was Wednesdays?
Wednesdays.
8:00 AM to?
Actually, I think I said, um, what did I say? It's an hour in the morning. I'm there from 8 o'clock to 9 o'clock, just twiddling my thumbs, if anybody wants to show up. I did meet with all of our fabulous staff and we had a number of meetings where they fully initiated and indoctrinated me into the ways of the city. So I'm ready to sit here with full knowledge now. And then I am waiting my committee assignments patiently and I'd be happy to attend something. I'm sorry I didn't get to go to the Historic Review Board Committee Meeting on Monday. I ended up not getting to leave my office until about 45 minutes after the meeting had started and I didn't want to interrupt, but I plan to go to all of them that are out there at least once in the next month or two.
Counselor Parker?
Well, I attended the Catalinas last night at the Cupcake Social at Saint Patrick's Church. And again, I agree, Mayor, it's one of the special elements of Canby participating in the Christmas spirit. The Nutcracker coming up. I've, for another year or two, still have a relative participating in that. So that's going to be fun, going down to see my niece. And finally, two things. One, in terms of the citizen participation with the people who showed up tonight asking for a statement. If you have some suggested language, let us know. That may be a good, good starting point. Send it to the mayor. He has nothing to do, so you can email it to him.
Please, please do.
And finally, the mayor talking about, "We don't have snowplows and we're not going to get them and don't bother me about it." I like the power of the Facebook now and Canby now, that you are now, you are now proactively anticipating a comment and so a preemptive strike.
It was a preemptive strike, yes. Counselor Hensley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I likewise attended the Bridging Cultures Thanksgiving. The last few years, I haven't been able to because I've had other conflicts. So I was really excited that I was able to take the kids and go. We all enjoyed it very much. Light of the Night, of course, and Operation Snuggle. My daughter and I have gone to that for several years. So last year, we had my son. This year, he wasn't with us, but Hayden and I participated. And I should have brought her volleyball knee pads, but we made several blankets together and always, always enjoy that event. We're really very lucky that that organization is here. So I'm very glad that they do that every year. And I had to work last night, so I didn't get to go to Catalinas last night, but I did get them at the Chamber Lunch, so I still feel like my holiday season has been kicked off appropriately. I don't have any liaison reports. You already covered C4. And my next meeting is next week, so I'll have a more, I guess, a better liaison report in January. But I did want everyone to know, especially those up here who may be interested, that Celebration for Life for Councilwoman Barry Lucas will be this Saturday at 2:00 PM at the American Legion Post 122, and you can contact the post for details. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Likewise, my family was able to attend the Bridging Cultures Thanksgiving Dinner. It was just a great, great time. I sure appreciate all those that worked so hard to put that on. It was overwhelming to see the response. It was truly amazing. I don't think I've seen a fuller parking lot. Have you? Yeah, I've not seen a fuller parking lot. Just a great, great time. Thank you, everyone, for inviting us all to be there. Looking forward to many more get-togethers this next year. Kids, I am very, very sorry. I just checked the flash alert and Canby Schools are the only school in Clackamas County that has not already decided to close. So do your snow dance, flush some ice cubes, go to bed with boots on, and we'll hope for a closure tonight. So just checked for you. And then finally, the Urban Renewal Agency tonight had another, just a banner event tonight in which we approved the development agreement for the Hanlon Project, which is our new city block project. And Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask our city... Oh, here's a great picture here, if not everyone can see that. Clint, would you mind turning that around? And Mr. Mayor, if you would indulge me, I would like to ask our administrator, Rick Robinson, to just speak to that for us.
I would be happy to. Thank you for the opportunity. This is a four-story development. It has sixteen, excuse me, 69 studio and one-bedroom apartments on the upper three floors. The first floor is retail, commercial, and restaurant space. It's on the corner of Second Avenue and North Ivy Street. It's just right up the block here. It is a building that is going to be sitting in the, what is currently the old Planning Department and the old Finance Department. The Historic City Hall would sit down at the far right-hand corner. It's not shown in the picture, but it will remain later in today's agenda. We'll have a discussion about and hopefully approval of a historic overlay and local historic registry designation for our city hall so we can protect and preserve it in perpetuity. And we're very excited about that. It's a great project that will bring, I think, some really awesome vitality to our downtown business community and should just do wonders for downtown businesses.
Tremendous project. It is, we talked earlier about it's generational and transformational. It will truly change Canby for the good. And on behalf of the council and the Urban Renewal Agency, I want to thank Rick Robinson for the incredible amount of work that he has done to make this project happen and to staff, to Amanda, to Kim, to Renata, all those who have put in just countless hours of work to bring this to us and to our children. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Hyde?
Yes. The posters? Sorry, Clint. I'll talk even though. All right, so I don't have too much committee-wise, but the library, I'll talk about a couple of programs. So there's movies that are shown monthly, children's or families' movies. The next one is tomorrow, actually. It's Finding Dory. It's going to be right there in our, the first major... I forget the name of the room. What's it called, Rick? The big room? Thank you. Right, the Willelham Room. And then on Thursday, next Thursday, Mascotas will be shown in Spanish at 6:00 PM. So they're both at 6:00 PM. That's coming up. And then the Friends of the Library has their annual tour of homes this Saturday. It's from 11:00 to 3:00. So there's about five homes that are totally decked out in cool Christmas gear and finery. And so for $15, you can buy a ticket at the library and come on down and get some ideas for decorating or get in the spirit by looking at those houses. Also, let's see, Canby Area Transit, they, this is a policy thing. They've decided to cut back their number of meetings to six per year, more if necessary. So they were meeting pretty much monthly, but realized they didn't really have enough content on the agenda, so they made kind of a wise move and decided to cut back to more like every other month is what their goal is. And they are also giving out Liberty Cab information, Canby Area Transit is, to those folks that want to lift when the buses aren't running. So weekends, there's no Canby Area Transit service. Liberty Cab's been around for a few months in Canby. He's located right here, pretty cheap rates, so we can get you more information if you're interested in that. They also received an ODOT grant recently, Canby Area Transit did. So they will add midday service to Wilsonville for just one year. It's only a one-year grant. It's from the fiscal year 2018-19, so it's out a little ways, but that'll be helpful to some commuters and folks that need to reach Wilsonville. It just will only last a year unless we can find additional funding, but that's good news for that year. And then they are having their annual open house, Canby Area Transit. So on December 19th, right here in council chambers, they're having kind of a party. There's cookies and hot cider and it's kind of a writer appreciation evening. So if you're a writer, great. If you'd like to be a writer, you can come anyway and say hi to the staff and whatnot. They're also doing a little bus tour of all the cool Christmas lights around Canby. So if you call by December 15th, you can make a reservation. You pay a dollar and the cat bus will come to your doorstep and take you around for about an hour, if there's enough room, and check out the Christmas lights in Canby. So there's the little flyer for that. Other things, I attended a lot of those same events. The Bridging Cultures Feast was a great time. The 4H Awards, went to that, that night also with Mayor Hodson at the Event Center, Clackamas County Event Center. That was fun. Giving Tuesday, the Canby Center had a big, their yearly fundraiser on Giving Tuesday. So that's after, you know, Cyber Monday comes Giving Tuesday where groups, you can give to nonprofits, local nonprofits or any nonprofit, but they raised about $5,000 that night. They did great. Kiwanis, I visited them and they're doing an exchange with Rotary this week. So it's like a joint meeting on Friday with the two groups, which I think is pretty cool. The two groups can see what each other are up to. I like that. And First Friday, the parade was great. And Sharon Snyder, who was not here, but she's a Kiwinian, Kiwanis lady that leads the toy and food drive, she got to flip the lights on, so yay for Sharon. Operation Snuggle was great. And yeah, the Chamber Luncheon was a festive time. And that's what I've got.
Thank you. Counselor Coleman?
Mr. Mayor, on the planning front, we had a meeting on November the 28th. They had two public hearings. The first one was 105-lot subdivision with park dedication on 21.7 acres on Southeast 13th, and that was approved. They also considered a request for designation of the Canby City Hall as a historic landmark, and that was also approved. The next scheduled meeting will be this next Monday, here in this room. And I'd just like to thank all the planning commissioners and planning chair for all their hard work and dedication. Special thank you to Christina Roca, whose term ends this month. She's served our commission well. And also like to welcome the newest commissioners, Sean Varwig and Andre Chernishov. And on the traffic safety front, we had a traffic safety meeting this last Monday and we had a presentation from a traffic safety supply company that provides the city of Canby with signage and they showed us their newest and brightest signs, and that was pretty interesting. Also like to say thank you to all the traffic safety members and chairman for all their hard work. And the group will be changing the date in which they meet. They've been meeting on the first Monday of each month and that's going to shift to the first Friday of each month. And then around town, my wife and I went to the Red Mitten Christmas Bazaar, which is going on at the Warner Grange on New Era Road through the 10th. And that's a lot of fun. Got a lot of good goodies. Attended the Christmas tree lighting in Wake Park, dinner at the backstop. And also attended the Chamber Luncheon at Canby Grove, and that was a lot of fun. And just like to say, it's been a pleasure working with all of you, the city staff and fellow counselors, and want to wish you all Merry Christmas and much success in the new year as well as to all our citizens. Thank you.
Moving to the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the November 16th, 2016 City Council Regular Meeting, the appointment of Andre Chernishov to the Planning Commission for a term starting on January 1st, 2017, and expiring on December 31st, 2019, and the appointment of Sean Varwig to the Planning Commission for a term to expire on December 31st, 2017.
Motion's been made by Council President Dale and seconded by Counselor Hensley to approve the consent agenda, which include the minutes of the November 16th, 2016 City Council Regular Meeting, appointment of Andre Chernishov to the Planning Commission for a term starting on January 1st, 2017, and expiring on December 31st, 2019, and appointment of Sean Varwig to the Planning Commission for a term to expire on December 31st, 2017. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? That carries 6-0. Moving in, we have a public hearing this evening on the, it's HD 16-01, Former City Hall Landmark Designation. So I will read our lovely legislative public hearing format and we will then let Brian do his work. The matter presently before the hearing body requires a public hearing. All interested persons in attendance shall be heard on the matter. If you wish to testify on this matter, please fill out a yellow public testimony card and give it to the city recorder. At the appropriate time, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and interest in the matter. Those people that are interested in testifying as either proponents or opponents, please indicate your desire to speak by raising your hands at this time. Raise your hands. Excellent. For longer presentations, proponents and opponents may buy time from one another. In so doing, those either in favor or opposed may allocate their time to a spokesperson who will represent the entire group. All questions must be directed through the mayor. Any evidence to be considered must be submitted to the hearing body for public access. All written testimony received both for and against shall summarize, shall be summarized by staff and presented briefly to the hearing body during the staff report. The public hearing will be conducted as follows. Staff report, and we'll follow up by questions, if any, by the hearing body. I will then open the public hearing for testimony. Those that are for it, so the proponents, if you're under the age of 10, you can speak as long as you want. Everyone else is three minutes. If you're an opponent, you have no more than three minutes. I will then close the public hearing. Questions, if any, by the hearing body, and then discussion by the hearing body. A decision shall be made by the hearing body at the close of the hearing or the matter will be continued to a date certain in the future. This will be the only notice of that date you will receive. Does anyone have any questions about the procedure of the hearing? Doesn't see it. All right. Mr. Brown, hello, sir.
Hello. Thank you very much. This is all about an application that was submitted to the city and it was on behalf of the Historic Resource Board. And we took that application and processed it in accordance with the Land Development and Planning Ordinance. And so it was advertised for a public hearing for not only the city council, but for the Planning Commission and started with our Historic Resource Board, which is your advisory board on historic matters. They held their hearing and they unanimously on November 7th recommended that the old Historic City Hall building that's at 182 North Holly Street be designated as a local historic landmark. The ordinance that we have that's part of our zoning code refers to assembling, and when it was adopted, placed three properties in Canby as original local historic landmarks, which creates a local register of historic landmarks. And so by having this nomination, it places a recognition on the property. It has this 50-year historic, that's one of the criterias, that it's over 50 years old. And there's many buildings that meet that criteria. It also, you look for architectural and historical and an environmental significance to the... And this particular building, as you'll see by the application that's in your packet, had particular historical and architectural significance. And one of the reasons that the, was emphasized in the application is wanting to preserve the characteristic, the visual architectural presence of that. And of course, the council has voiced that many times in the past. I've heard that. And we've heard that from many people in the community. And that was picked up by our Historic Resource Board. And with all the work of Carol Palmer and helping put that application together and doing the research that's necessary to find that historical significance is very critical in placing that information in front of you. So as part of the planning staff and charge of the zoning ordinance, we helped make sure that it went through the proper process. And the Planning Commission and City Council do not have to hold hearings, but we have the opportunity to do that. We've always done that in Canby and we've advertised for the three hearings. And we've brought that now before you after going to the Planning Commission. They met on November 28th. And again, we had a unanimous vote from those present at that meeting to support that Historic Resource Board recommendation and request that you designate it as a local historic landmark, add it to that local historic register. And when you do that, the code automatically then applies a historic overlay zone. It's called an A. And that goes over the base zoning that the property has, so we're not changing it. C1 zoning in the downtown area here, we're adding this overlay that recognize that particular properties and the three others in the past that have that historical overlay and adds them to that historical list. Are there any questions?
My only question and concern is just making sure that we understand that we get this designation, that it's going to preserve City Hall as is, the look and at least the exterior piece of it going forward.
What you've, what you've hit on is the importance is the exterior. And it's worth noting, I think Kara pointed this out at one of the public hearings, is that we're wanting to retain the historical part of the building and it's been determined that the council chambers is not part of that. And so the council chambers, there is a plan to remove that part of the building. And what we want to do is maintain and/or restore where it isn't currently historic, such as some of the windows and things, to that original character if we possibly can. And so it's protecting the exterior. The interior, we want to help protect historic structures by allowing the inside of them to be remodeled and to move to whatever new uses that we might find for them in the future. And that often requires internal remodeling.
You mentioned three landmarks, right, Brian? What are the other two?
Every, every time people ask me, there's probably someone else in the audience that could answer that for you.
Great. Thank you, Brian. I will now open up the public hearing for testimony. So those, those that are in favor of us doing it, I have a myriad of cards here. The first person, I have Alec House. Would you like to come up here, young sir? Alec, how are you?
Um, I'm good.
Good.
Thank you.
What do you have to say for us tonight?
I'm confessing my belief if Canby City Hall should be a historical landmark or not.
You are, the floor is yours, sir. Feel free to tell us what you think.
Well, in my opinion, City Hall should be turned into a historical landmark. The building is 85 years old, as you know, so City Hall is, is an important part of our community. It has an interesting architecture that can still be seen today and City Hall is an important landmark in Canby. It is my request to make it a City Hall, a historical landmark. First, it should be turned into a museum. I think it should be turned into a museum because it has a jail that isn't used anymore. It would also be a great place to learn about the first members of City Hall and the early residents. The building was also part of a fire station and the old Canby Library. These are just a few of the historical facts. Next, I would like to talk about the extra, architecture. Over the years, Canby City Hall has kept many features of the design. Earlier, I discussed the jail. For example, it has barred windows, a single-pane picture window and a metal door that is still there today. It also has a pyramid roof that you can hang things with. A display would be ideal for a museum. Finally, I would like to discuss the environmental importance of Canby City Hall. In 1937, City Hall made improvements like landscaping and sidewalks to the city of Canby. The old City Hall led to important meetings like the donation of Wake Park. For over 85 years, City, Canby City Hall has been cherished by Canby residents. In conclusion, well, over the, over the years, City Hall has become one of the biggest monuments in Canby. In conclusion, Canby City Hall deserves to be a historical landmark. Its history is great, the architecture is terrific, and the environmental communication with the people is off the charts. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Alec. Next, I have Casey Brown. Good evening, Casey. How are you?
Good.
Good. Take your time. You're okay.
Document on City Hall by Case. I hear people are talking about Canby City Hall and I think we should make it a historical site for historical, architectural, and beneficial reasons. First, the historical reasons. One, there is a jail once used around 1901. Two, there is a fire station that was very useful. Three, there was a library that got turned into a meeting room for Herman and Albert Lee, Joseph and Willa Knight, along with Ormel R. Mack. Where did the library go? It took the place of a hardware store on September 16th, 1937, the same day the old library got turned into the meeting room. Wow, so much history. Second, the architectural reasons. Well, this fascinating building has the brick walls with a stucco interior underneath a- a square pyramid roof. Outside the City Hall, there is a, there's some wrought iron fencing and barred windows on the jail. How unique. Finally, the beneficial reasons. Well, it could raise money and popularity, so I ask you this. Do you really want to reduce this building to, to rubble, but after what history it's been through? Do you really want to destroy such beauty? So I appeal to you to make Canby City Hall a historical site.
Excellent. Malia Stoddard?
Did you know the old Canby City Hall used to be a fire station, a library, and a City Hall? Hi, I'm Malia from the Elementary School of Philander Lee, and I'm here to tell you why we should make the old City Hall a historical landmark. First, I think the old City Hall should be a historical landmark because it is so important to our history, and this is why I think so. It was used as a policy and decision-making area. It was also used as a place where people paid bills for four decades. Second, in my opinion, the design is important. For example, it is made with stucco walls, it has a pyramid roof and wrought iron fencing, and even a jail for criminals. Thus, I think it will benefit our city of Canby by teaching our youth about Canby's history. In conclusion, this is why I think the old Canby City Hall should be a historical landmark, because of its history, its design, and because it will benefit Canby. Whatever happens, I just hope it will help improve the city I know and love.
Great. Thank you.
Well, ah, the old Canby City Hall is an amazing place. It would be a good place to go spend time with your family, and I think we should keep the old City Hall and turn it into a historical landmark because it will benefit Canby, has historical significance and architectural significance. First, it is historically significant. It has been many different things over the years, like a jail, a library, and a fire station. Next, it will benefit Canby, like we will make more money and we will get a higher population. Last reason, it is its architectural significance. It is a very sturdy building made out of brick, and one area has metal bars. Finally, that is why I think we should keep the old Seehaw and turn it into a historical landmark because of its historical significance, and it has historical significance, it will benefit Canby. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that we should make the old Canby City Hall a historical landmark because of the historical, architectural, and environmental significance. First, the old City Hall has been an important part of Canby's history. For example, the City Hall is about 80 years old and kept life-saving fire equipment for the fire department. There was a jail at the City Hall also. Next, the old City Hall is architecturally significant because it has kept a lot of its original design since it was first built. One example is that the City Hall has kept its historical significance. Has been a visual landmark to the community for many years. The City Hall is different from the rest because it has interesting landscaping and a wrought iron fence. In conclusion, that is why I think that we should make the old Canby City Hall a historical landmark because of its historical, architectural, and environmental significance.
Great. Thank you. And finally, Carol Palmer.
Yeah.
I'm mainly here just to answer any questions that you have, and I can start with your question. There are three lots, or three properties on the historic registry right now. The Mack House, which was a house that just got moved, it's, you know where those, you all know where that is, okay. The Bear House, and also the Wedding Chapel, that's now also becoming, I think, a, a music center. So, those are the other three properties. And one of the reasons, this is really important, this nomination, this application for the City Hall to the local registry, is that 13 years ago, when the Historic Review Board that was in existence at that time went away, what happened is, a lot of the work that they had done to establish the initial local registry sort of fell off the radar screen. So, one of our goals is this Historic Review Board for 2017, is to put the spotlight back on that local registry. And I'm losing my voice, too. And so this is the first step for us. The second step is we want to add the Depot Museum. We've got the owner's approval for that, which we need for any property that you're going to add to the historic registry. And then we want to create, we'll have a critical mass then of five properties, which really gives us something to work with in terms of creating a brochure. We're looking at something of the same quality that we did with the Heritage Trail brochure, but it would be a very different format from that. And we also want to create an official website, because Brian keeps saying we need to get an official list of that registry, so it's out there in the public. But we also want to create sort of a heritage section in the City Hall website where that people, where people can go to see the landmarks, read about them, but also read about the Heritage Trail and the other programming that we're putting together. So, sort of one-stop shopping for people coming to Canby or new to Canby. And also, last, we are hoping to put together some sort of public event where, probably in conjunction with something else like a First Friday, where we can, again, put the spotlight on the local historic landmarks. And that's it.
When we speak of local treasures, I don't think that, that we can say that without acknowledging Carol and the work that she's done in the community of Canby, and, and it, to me, it's astounding the contributions that you're making to this community and in preserving some of our most precious resources in this community. So, thank you so very much.
You, in a short time, have had a tremendous impact on our community in, as Rick has just said, just maintaining the, the history of our town. And I, I think we go back to the walking tour that was created and just the turnout for that event, and, and those kinds of things are, are, are big deals for communities, and it's definitely a piece for our community that we need to hang on to for sure, especially as we talk about, you know, new buildings like this and a new project like that, and what that can mean for our community. And it, it does, it changes the landscape of, of our town, and so we need to preserve those things. So, thank you for all that you do. Appreciate it.
I want to thank Tony Crawford, because one of the things that we want to do is make sure that we've got the schools engaged and that we're thinking about their needs, and so Tony's the one that did all the work to get the school children here today, and we really appreciate that.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. If, if it would be okay with the council, before we move into resolutions and ordinances, can we move on the agenda, the, the findings and conclusions and final order pieces? Because I think we've got some little ones that want to know what we decide, right?
You bet.
And then probably need to get to bed because school is tomorrow.
No.
Sorry.
No.
Maybe not.
No, no.
But it's snow dancing.
Yeah, for the working parents, they're like, yeah, we need, so we'll change the, so we'll go into the findings and conclusion piece, if we can do that.
We need to conclude the...
Sorry, I do need to do that. Thank you. If, are there any other proponents? Any other, any opponents? All right, I will close the public hearing. We're closed.
There's a motion on page 13.
Perfect. Thank you, Kim. Any questions by the hearing body on the matter? Any discussion?
Can I make a comment?
Yes, discussion. Go ahead, yes.
Discussion.
Yes.
Thanks for coming, Lee School students. That's really significant when kids come to speak before us. It doesn't happen very often, but it's really special. That shows how much you care about Canby, and we appreciate it. Good job.
Excellent. Perfect.
Mr. Mayor, I remember, unfortunately, it was about 45 years ago, when I was their age, I was given the class assignment to interview the city administrator at the time. And I remember he was very large, and he had a desk that was about three acres across from me, but the, the image of City Hall is burned indelibly into my soul, and really look forward to a great conclusion tonight on this matter. Thank you for coming tonight and speaking. Tell them that the city coun, tell your, your, your teachers that the city council says you need extra credit for language arts this week. Very good job, all of you.
Yeah, I did an excellent job, all of you guys. So, if you'll hold on, we're going to do a quick vote here, and then those of you that spoke, I'd love for you to come up and get a picture with myself and the rest of the council, okay?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to move to approve application HD 1601 to designate the former City Hall as a local historic landmark, to be listed on the local register of historic landmarks, and that the zoning of the property be changed to add the historical protection overlay zone A designation to the existing underlying base zone. Second.
Motion's been made by Counsel Hensley and second by Counsel Height to approve application HD 16-01 to designate the former City Hall as a local historic landmark, to be listed on the local registry of historic landmarks, and that the zoning of the property be changed to add the historic protection overlay zone A designation to the existing underlying base zone. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes six to zero. It is now a historical landmark.
It's official.
Should we stand in the background? Can we stand in the background?
At the city of Canby, you can make it happen.
No, I can't. That's it. Come on up here, you guys. Yeah, you guys can look here.
We can stand behind you right here. Is that okay?
Second, you get us if we stand.
Just stand up behind him.
Please don't sit down.
Yeah, please don't do that. Where, where are you going? Okay.
Okay, all right, everyone stand still. Smile, man.
Yeah.
Hey, fuzzy pickles.
Ew.
Say we're two hours late. It's snow day.
Oh, there you go, snow day. All right, hey.
Thanks, kids.
Thanks, you guys. So very much.
Thank you, kids.
Way to go. All right, now go home and go to bed.
Yeah, that's right.
Go home and go to bed. Go home and snow dance.
We adjourned, is where we go. I apologize. Thank you. There's a findings piece that we need to approve?
Yes, there is.
Thank you.
You did great. That's what the kids need.
Yeah.
That was 1455? Because the language, the language is totally different.
All right, so we have, sorry, we need a motion for the...
To what?
Kim, what is it? I'm sorry.
You need a motion, I'm a little confused.
Okay, we just need to state that.
I'll do that.
Thank you.
I'm still a little confused.
Go for it.
Oh, oh, it's your business. Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the applica, findings, conclusions, and final order, HD 1601.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, so motion made by Counsel Hensley, second by Counsel Smith, to approve the findings, conclusions, and final order for HD 16-01. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? 360. Kim, are we good on that one? Thank you. Sorry about that. All right, resolutions and ordinances.
The first item we have is Resolution 1253. This is authorizing the extension of municipal service, sewer service to 1575 North Pine Street, tax lot 31E28DD03201, located outside of the Canby city limits pursuant to the urban growth management agreement between Clackamas County and the city of Canby.
Yes, thank you. I will comment and make a recommendation relative to this request. It is very unusual that we would receive a request to provide city services to a property not within the city limits. This particular case is something of a unique circumstance, and my recommendation to you is that you approve it. The, the basis for that approval goes all the way back to 2001, an action of the, the city council that where you, that then city council identified several conditions that could be used in consideration of, of an authorization or approval to connect outside of the city limits. One is a health or environmental hazard, the second is an area of still water which could be alleviated by a water service extension, third is a pending annexation or promised annex in the future, the fourth is an overall infrastructure master plan that's in place. In this particular request, we actually have two of the four conditions, and pursuant to this, this earlier memorandum, only one of the four conditions is required, and, but in this particular instance, we have two of the four conditions that are present. The first is that there is a circumstance that is a potential public health risk. There's a well which is located within 100 feet of a septic system, and, and so that does not meet the, the appropriate standard. The second is that the Vanda coverings have offered and agreed pursuant to, to the resolution that you see here, to pursue annexation into the city limits within the next two years. It's also, I think, important to note relative to this particular application, that the Vanda coverings occupy a, a parcel of land that is surrounded on all sides by city property. So they're just kind of sitting out there on their own. I took a look at this, actually spent a lot of time with Brian Brown, talking through the public policy implications, the unusual nature, and the finding, or the, the conditions that would have to be president, present in order for you to consider and for me to recommend that, that you authorize the connection. I think that there is adequate objective information and evidence to support the request, and so my recommendation to you is that, as you approve the resolution as presented to you.
Questions or comments for...
Obscure comment here. Back in the late 1970s, when I was a reporter down in Medford, there was a tradition by one developer to build houses as accessory to farm, as a farm dwelling, and, and then would have the septic tank fail, and then the city would have to spend its money running a line out to it, and then it would make his land that much more valuable because it had a, a sewer line. I can support this one, and especially given the fact that it's an island, that it is surrounded by the city. But we need to be careful about this in the future, of making sure that development follows an orderly process of first annexation and then extension of services. Here, it is unique. I can support it, but there, there will be conditions where I won't be able to.
Yeah, and I would, would agree with that. In this particular case, and I did check to verify that there is a, a sewer main right in front of the property, immediately adjacent to it, that was one of the conditions precedent to recommendation for approval that I, that I explored to make sure that, that we weren't, that I wasn't recommending to use something that would result in, in additional costs to the city beyond that, which we would normally provide to, to a, a connection like this. This...
its money running a line out to it, and then it would make his land that much more valuable because it had a, a sewer line. I can support this one, and especially given the fact that it's an island, that it is surrounded by the city. But we need to be careful about this in the future, of making sure that development follows an orderly process of first annexation and then extension of services. Here, it is unique, I can support it, but there, there will be conditions where I won't be able to.
Yeah, and, and I would, would agree with that. In this particular case, and I did check to verify that there is a, a sewer main right in front of the property, immediately adjacent to it, that was one of the conditions precedent to recommendation for approval that I, that I explored to make sure that, that we weren't, that I wasn't recommending to use something that would result in, in additional costs to the city beyond that, which we would normally provide to, to a connection like this. This particular connection is subject to Clackamas County concurrence pursuant to an existing IGA between the city and the county, and one of the conditions of approval is that the property owner seek that concurrence from Clackamas County and present it to the city, so that we can verify that in fact Clackamas County has signed off on their side. They don't, it's not been my experience that Clackamas County would unreasonably withhold approval, and not anticipating that, that they, in this case, they would withhold approval because there doesn't seem to be evidence to support a denial.
I'm glad we can help out Mr. Vanda Coovering who's here tonight, and two conditions were met, I think that's great. And soon, he will be annexing in, so welcome to Canby. Thank you, Rick.
And if I, if I messed up your name, my apologies.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move we approve resolution twelve fifty-three, a resolution authorizing the extension of municipal sewer, sewer service to fifteen seventy-five North Pine Street, tax lot number three one E two eight DD zero three two oh one, located outside of the Canby city limits pursuant to the urban growth management agreement between Clackamas County and city of Canby.
Second.
Motion's been made by Council Coleman and seconded by Council Height to approve resolution one two five three, authorizing the extension of municipal sewer services to one five seven five North Pine Street, tax lot number three one E two eight DD zero three two zero one, located outside of the Canby city limits pursuant to the urban growth management agreement between Clackamas County and the city of Canby. Any further discussion?
I just want to say, I thi, I think he should have had to have Mason and Cohen come and give a speech in order to get approved.
Put their children up to get things passed, okay? Duly noted, we'll make the, pass that resolution next meeting. All right, all those, all those... All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes six zero. Thank you.
The next item we have is resolution one two five four. This is adopting a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Canby and the Canby Police Association for the period from July first, two thousand and sixteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, and repealing resolution one one seven three.
Yes, I can speak to this as well. I want to compliment Amanda Zeiber for coordinating this collective bargaining agreement and the meet and confer process with our police officers association. This was an extended process for several reasons, not the least of which was the time commitment to, to complete this building, and the police association was, was very patient in working with us in accomplishing this. There are two major pieces of this, I think, are of the greatest interest to you. One relates to a two percent cost of living increase that would be retroactive to the contract expiration date of July one, two thousand and sixteen, for, for the represented, for the employees represented by this bargaining unit. And the other one is a change to Article nineteen, Health and Welfare, where employees have agreed to split premium increases over six percent with the city fifty, on a fifty-fifty basis. So, split evenly, increases over, over six percent. And that, for us, was, was a big deal. The agreement also requires, if the increase is more than ten percent, that we meet and confer and determine how to divide up the difference between the ten percent and the actual cost. I think that was a big win, and Amanda deserved tremendous accolades for the work that she did, putting this agreement together, getting to yes with the bargaining units, and, and negotiating this compromise on, on the health and welfare portion.
Thank you, Amanda, for that. That's a lot of work, but also thank the police union, too, for helping to get to a middle ground, because, yeah, we are going to see some pretty hefty increases in some areas here, so that's a huge piece for us, so thank you for, for tackling that piece.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to adopt resolution one two five four, resolution adopting a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Canby City and the Canby Police Association for the period from July first, two thousand and sixteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, and repealing resolution one one seven three.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Afraid that I was going to die on the vine there. So, motion's been made by Council Hensley and seconded by Council Coleman to approve resolution one two five four, adopting a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Canby City and the Canby Police Association for the period from July first, two thousand and sixteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, and repealing resolution one one seven three. Any other discussion? Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes six zero.
The next item we have is ordinance one four five four. This is before you for second reading. This is amending Canby Municipal Code, Chapter five point one six point oh three oh, and five point one six point oh six oh regarding liquor license review in the city of Canby.
And the significant change to this one is that we added a provision that, that a person applying for, person seeking a liquor license need only have applied for their business license, they do not necessarily have to have obtained it.
Yeah, and we had seen this, oh, gosh, I guess a month ago now, since our first meeting in November, but I think it goes to, I want to commend staff for quick reaction time on something that's an easy fix, so, Kim, thank you for that, and hopefully it'll be easier for other businesses in the future who'll get this taken care of. Great, I'll take a motion, please.
I move that we adopt ordinance fourteen fifty-four, amending the Canby Municipal Code, Chapter five point one six point zero three zero, and five point one six point zero six zero regarding liquor license review in the city of Canby.
Motion's been made by Council Height and seconded by Council Coleman to approve ordinance one four five four, amending Canby Municipal Code, Chapter five point one six point zero three zero, and five point one six point zero six zero regarding liquor license review in the city of Canby. Second reading, and we'll do a roll call vote here.
Councilor Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Parker?
Yes.
Councilor Hensley?
Aye.
Councilor Dale?
Aye.
Councilor Height?
Aye.
Councilor Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
The next item we have is ordinance fourteen fifty-five. This is amending the zoning designation of a certain property in the city of Canby, Clackamas County, Oregon, in conformance with the comprehensive plan and the land development and planning ordinance of the city of Canby for tax lot six thousand of tax map three dash one E dash thirty-three CA.
Thank you, Kim.
I think we've already talked about this. This is a historic designation.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, well then, Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance one four five five, amending the zone, zoning designation of certain property in the city of Canby, Clackamas County, Oregon, in conformance with the comprehensive plan and land development and planning ordinance of the city of Canby for tax lot six thousand of tax map three dash one E dash thirty-three CA.
Motion's been made by Council Hensley, seconded by Council Height to approve ordinance one four five five, amending the zoning designation of a certain property in the city of Canby, Clackamas County, Oregon, in conformance with the comprehensive plan and the land development and planning ordinance of the city of Canby for tax lot six thousand of tax map three dash one E dash thirty-three CA. Any other discussions or thoughts? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, aye, sorry.
Anyone opposed? Carry six zero then. Thank you, Kim. New business, we already took care of the findings piece, so cancellation of December twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen city council meeting.
You have no item on the agenda.
You don't? How did that happen?
I don't know how that happened.
How'd that happen?
That's crazy.
It's Canby.
It is, truly, staff-related. Is there anyone that wants to meet that day, that wants to have the conversation? Nope? All right. Kim, you just need a, you need a motion or just a consensus of?
Consent.
Yep. Since it's consented that we're not going to meet. City administrators, business, and staff reports, anything? Okay. Next opportunity for citizen input, if there's any citizens wishing to provide more input, you're welcome to raise your hand and come on up. No takers tonight, okay? Kim, action review.
You have approved the consent agenda, you've adopted resolutions one two five three and one two five four, you've adopted ordinance one four five four, and you've approved ordinance fourteen fifty-five to come up for second reading on January fourth, two thousand and seventeen, and staff will do everything that needs to be done notification-wise to cancel the December twenty-first city council meeting.
Kim? Tim, do we have exec session this evening?
We do, Mr. Mayor. I move we go into executive session pursuant to ORS one nine two dot six six zero, parent three labor negotiations.
All right, all those in favor going into exec session?
Aye.
All right, I need to read this real quick. The city council will now recess this meeting to meet in executive session for the purpose of discussing labor negotiations. Executive session is held under pursuant to ORS one nine two dot six six zero, parent two, parent, no, sorry, just parent three, correct?
Yep.
Thank you. Which allows the council to meet in executive session to discuss those topics. Only representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. The council will adjourn to the Willow Creek Conference Room to hold its executive session. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the session, we may reconvene the meeting in the Willow Creek Conference Room and conduct any further business that needs to be taken care of. Any questions on that at all?
No.
Okay. So, we will temporarily adjourn into exec session. Those of you that are still here, and those of you at, at home in Canby, have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
See you in the new year. Next door.